Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, Thursday, November 13th, 2025, and this public hearing is now open. This event is being recorded and will be posted for public review. My name is Michael Kirschner. I am the Regional Supervisor from the Division of Air Quality's Asheville Regional Office, and I have been appointed to be the Hearing Officer for this public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive your comments for consideration in the issuance of an air quality permit to the Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Company, LLC, Station 150, located here in Mooresville, North Carolina. A separate public hearing related to the air quality permit for Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Company, LLC, Station 155, located in Lexington, North Carolina, will occur next week, November 18th, 2025. Comments specific to Station 155 should be made at that public hearing. Transco Station 150 has submitted an application to add a new natural gas-fired combustion turbine and associated piping components and a new natural gas-fired emergency generator. The address of the site is 236 Transco Road, Mooresville, Iredelle County, North Carolina, 28117. All forms of comments will be received and all will have equal consideration in the final decision on whether to issue the permit. The Director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Abercynsckus, has decided to conduct this public hearing as part of the comment period to receive your comments. The public hearing announcement was originally published in the Mooresville Tribune and on the Division of Air Quality's website on October 7th, 2025. During this public hearing, we will be receiving oral comments from those individuals who have registered to speak at this event. If you have not registered to speak but wish to provide oral comments, please return to the registration table in the lobby and sign up. Joining me for this hearing tonight are representatives from the Department of Environmental Quality and Division of Air Quality's Raleigh Central Office and Mooresville Regional Office. From the Raleigh Central Office, we have Taylor Hartsfield, the Deputy Director for Air Quality, Sean Taylor, the Division of Air Quality's Public Information Officer, Mark Sowella, the Title V Permitting Section Chief, Luke Mayer, Permitting Engineer for this particular application, Corey Williams, the Non-Discrimination and Community Engagement Coordinator, and Alyssa Beth, Permit Engineer in Raleigh Central Office. From the Mooresville Regional Office, Melinda Wallannon, the Regional Supervisor, and other Mooresville staff, including Mary Allen, Seth Hall, Joe Fouts, and Monica Colley. I would like to thank any local, city, or county officials who have joined us tonight. We appreciate your interest in the application and draft permit. The comment period for this draft permit opened Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, and will close on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via email to DAQ公眾@deq.nc.gov with the subject line Transco150.25A and by phone to a voicemail box at 919-707-8714. Also, if you have written comments that you wish to submit, we have a box available near the public microphone. All forms of comments will be received and all will have equal consideration in the final decision on whether to issue the permit. Copies of the permit application, the draft permit, and the draft permit review and other information concerning the permit application are available to the public at the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Mooresville Regional Office located at 610 East Center Avenue, Suite 301, in Mooresville, North Carolina, and at the Division of Air Quality Central Office in the Air Permitting Section located at 217 West Jones Street, Suite 4000, Raleigh, North Carolina. These materials are available during normal business hours at these locations, but please call in advance to make an appointment. A copy of the draft air permit and draft air permit review are also available on the Division of Air Quality's website at ncair.org, ncair.org, in the section titled Public Notices. The order of events for this hearing is as follows. First, Luke Mayer, Permit Engineer, will discuss the application and the draft air quality permit. This will be followed by the public comment period. Only those individuals who have registered to speak will be called on to present oral comments. To hear as many speakers as possible, oral statements will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. We want to provide as much time as possible for all speakers to be heard, and this public hearing is scheduled to adjourn no later than 8:00 PM tonight. We will call the names of each registered speaker in the order of their registration. When a speaker is called, I will also announce the name of the next speaker in the queue so that they can prepare to provide comments. Please proceed to the microphone when your name is called. Your time will start when you begin speaking. We will keep track of time and will announce when your three minutes have expired. Please respect the time of all who wish to present oral comments tonight by adhering to the time limits and closing your remarks as quickly as possible once your time is up. Cross-examination of the person presenting comments, or me, the Hearing Officer, will not be allowed. However, as the Hearing Officer, I may ask questions of speakers for clarification. Questions directed to the Division of Air Quality staff members will not be answered during this hearing. If you have questions for DAQ staff, we can provide you with our contact information so that you can contact us during normal business hours. We ask that when recognized speakers are presenting their comments, the audience refrain from making noises, including applause, talking over speakers, or making any other noise that could impact the integrity of the audio recording of tonight's hearing. This ensures that I can hear all public comments clearly, that all public comments can be captured as part of the official record, and that all speakers are treated with respect when it is their turn to speak. After receiving comments this evening, the public hearing will be closed. However, the period for submitting comments does not close until Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. Again, all forms of comments will be received and all will have equal consideration in the final decision on whether to issue the permit. I will now call on Luke Mayer to discuss the application and the draft air quality permit.
Good evening. My name is Luke Mayer. I work for the North Carolina Division of Air Quality, and I am the Permit Engineer for this application. Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Company, LLC, Station 150, also known as Transco Station 150, is a natural gas compressor station just south of the city of Mooresville in Iredelle County. This application is for the expansion of the existing facility with the installation of one natural gas-fired combustion turbine with associated piping components and one natural gas-fired emergency generator. This brings the total number of turbines on-site to four and the total number of generators on-site to three. Additionally, this modification includes insignificant activities associated with new combustion turbines, which are fugitive emissions from the new piping components and compressor blowout events from the new turbine. This application results in increases of emissions for nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, volatile organic compounds, sulfur dioxide, and particulate matter. This application will also result in increases in several organated hazardous air pollutants or HAPs and toxic air pollutants or TAPs. The facility is currently classified as a prevention of significant deterioration or PSD minor facility. To ensure that facility-wide emissions of nitrogen oxides as well as carbon monoxide remain below major source thresholds, federally enforceable conditions limiting facility-wide emissions of both to less than 250 tons per year is proposed. Thus, the facility is expected to continue to remain a minor source for PSD for all regulated pollutants post-modification. To ensure compliance with these limits, Transco will be required to perform annual emissions testing for nitrogen oxides, perform initial emissions testing for carbon monoxide, and operate the turbines below nitrogen oxides combustion technology at all times except for periods of startup, shutdown, or when the ambient temperature is below zero degrees Fahrenheit. The new turbine will also be subject to the Federal New Source Performance Standard, or NSPS, Subpart 4K, Standards of Performance for Stationary Combustion Turbines, and the new generator will be subject to NSPS Subpart 4J, Standards of Performance for Stationary Compression and Mission Internal Combustion Engines. The draft permit includes the required applicable provisions for each of these subparts. The facility is currently classified as a minor source of HAPs or hazardous air pollutants and is expected to remain minor following the modification. As such, the facility will also be subject to the Generally Available Control Technology Standard, Subpart 4Z, National Emission Standards for Hazardous Air Pollution for Stationary Reciprocating Internal Combustion Engines. Again, the draft permit includes the required applicable provisions for this subpart. As part of the application, Transco Station 150 also evaluated potential emissions of the regulated toxic air pollutants from the combustion of all turbines and engines at the facility. This modeling demonstrated that no toxic air pollutant act at the fence line is expected to be greater than 22% of its respectable, respected, acceptable ambient level. This modeling was reviewed and approved by the Division's Air Quality Analysis Branch on May 9th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. At this time, we will hear from those who have registered to provide oral comments this evening. When your name is called, please proceed to the microphone. To ensure our records are complete, please clearly state your name and who you are representing. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak clearly toward the microphone. And I will do my best to pronounce your names correctly and apologize in advance for any errors. We will now begin taking your comments. Melinda is going to be the timekeeper, and the first commenter will be Tyler Walker, followed by Tricia Ostrowski.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for having to put this podium up. They don't build these things without guys like me. Good evening. My name is Tyler Walker, our Project Manager with the Company Services, and I live here in the Lake Norman area. Our company provides services like land surveying and other land services to support the natural gas industry. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support for the improving of the air quality permit for compressor Station 150, which is part of the proposed Transco Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. The upgrades to Station 150 include new natural gas-fired turbines, which design with dry-low nitrogen oxide combustion technology. These turbines move the same amount of gas through the system more efficiently while producing lower emissions, a clear environmental win. Since the project adds new compressor units and piping, it triggers the federal leak detection and repair requirements. Under the EPA's New Source Performance Standards, these rules are designed to keep emissions low by requiring regular inspections to catch and fix any leaks. Those inspections typically use optical gas emission cameras or other sensors-based tools to quickly identify and repair leaks, improving both safety and environmental performance. The new turbine also meets the Clean Air Act standards and are regulated under the EPA's New Source Performance Standards, which require the best available control technology for emission reductions. This is a great example of how technology and environmental protection can go hand-in-hand. On top of federal rules, the station is going through two layers of review, federal and state, to ensure it meets the highest standard for public safety and environmental protection. At the federal level, the Federal Energy Regulatory Committee, or FERC, recently released this draft of environmental assessment for the Transco Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. Their review included upgrades like this one found no significant adverse environmental impacts. Independent federal experts conclude the project would not harm human health or the long-term health of the environment. At the state level, obviously, DEQ is conducting a thorough review of the air quality permit. Today's hearing is part of that process to include detailed air dispersion modeling to ensure emissions stay well below the health-based limits. Together, the federal and state reviews provide multiple layers of protection, giving the public confidence that projects like this can move forward responsibly. From my perspective, working in the natural gas industry every day, I've seen environmental protections and technologies improve dramatically. Astralis controls, next-generation monitoring, state-of-the-art equipment make these facilities cleaner and safer than ever before. Thank you for considering this important energy project for North Carolina. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll have Tricia Ostrowski, followed by Angel Fioris.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tricia Ostrowski. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to speak in support of the Station 150 upgrades. I live here in the Lake Norman area, and I work for Carolina's Natural Gas Coalition, an alliance of 145 member companies across the natural gas industry, as well as large energy users and economic developers who rely on natural gas every day. We are proud to count Williams, the company proposing this project, among our members. First, I want to mention why this compressor station upgrade and the broader Transco Southeast Supply Enhancement Project are so important. North Carolina needs more natural gas. Our state is experiencing surging population growth, record-breaking economic development, and rising electricity demand. We can't meet this massive demand without natural gas. Natural gas is affordable, reliable, cleaner energy, and it's available 24/7. It's a critical partner for renewables, which are intermittent in nature, and it helps ensure more renewables can be added to the grid without sacrificing reliability. Currently, our existing infrastructure to bring natural gas into the state is at capacity. The project is vital to helping ensure North Carolina will have additional natural gas needed to support our continued growth. Second, I want to highlight what this Station 150 upgrade means for air quality. Across the natural gas industry, there is a strong focus on innovation to reduce emissions and protect our environment. The upgrade at Station 150 would replace older units with one state-of-the-art natural gas turbine. Williams plans to use advanced combustion systems, low-emission turbine technology, and continuous monitoring, an approach that at a similar site in Virginia approved approximately 80, 98% reduction in emissions. Third, I want to speak to Williams' strong environmental track record. Through its emission reductions program, Williams has committed to reducing methane emissions from its transmission compressor fleet by 50% by 2030. That includes replacing older equipment with low-emission systems. In closing, on behalf of Carolina's Natural Gas Coalition, I want to thank you for your rigorous and science-based review of the draft air permit, and I encourage the final approval so that cleaner, more efficient upgrades at Station 150 can move forward. This project is critical to meeting North Carolina's surging energy needs safely, responsibly, and with strong protections for our air quality. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Angel Flores, followed by Tyson Dixon.
Good evening. My name is Angel Flores. I work for Bollon Electrical Services, a electrical company that supports utility, energy, infrastructure projects across our state. Our company actually helped upgrade one of the compressor stations in Concord, North Carolina. As an native North Carolinian, I have a personal interest in ensuring that projects like this are done the right way, safely, responsibly, and with care for our community. I'm here tonight to speak in support for the air quality permit of the compressor Station 150, associated with the Transco Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. What's being proposed here is an improvement. It's an improvement to an existing facility. Williams is replacing an older, less efficient turbine with a new one that runs cleaner, uses less fuel, and produces fewer emissions. This project will bring this site up to today's higher standard for safety and environmental performance. These kinds of upgrades are good for everyone. They help keep the energy affordable, reliable for North Carolina families and businesses. They also result in cleaner air, quieter operations, and greater efficiency. Upgrading equipment to be more efficient and cleaner is essential to Williams' approach. In fact, these upgraded compressor stations are designed, monitored, and operated by environmental professionals to ensure safe, reliable services for North Carolina's growing energy needs. It's also worth remembering that before a project like this can move forward, it has to pass a very thorough review process. Federal and state regulators look carefully at air quality design and safety before any improvements are made. That gives the public confidence that these facilities will operate with strict environmental limits. For me, this project represents progress. It's about keeping essential infrastructures up to date and using better technology to do the same work with less impact on the environment. That's a kind of forward-looking improvement that we should support. I want to thank you for the chance to speak, and I encourage the department to approve this permit. The compressor Station 150 upgrade is a strong, responsible project that benefits both our energy systems and our local communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Tyson Dixon, followed by Aiden Lawrence.
Good evening. My name is Tyson Dixon, and I've served as a Project Manager for Southeast Connections. We work on natural gas infrastructure across the U.S. and deliver projects to Williams for many years. To tell you a little bit about my background, I live in Durham, North Carolina. I have worked in Southeast Connections for five years and in utility space for eight, servicing electric, telecom, and power generation. Southeast Connections helps build and maintain the pipelines and facilities that deliver natural gas safely and reliably. That includes installing new lines, making systems improvements, and supporting the infrastructure that keeps natural gas flowing across our communities. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed upgrade at compressor Station 150 and to ask that the state rationalizes their air quality permit so that this support work can move forward. I have worked closely with Williams and their teams in the field. I know the level of care they bring to every phase of the project, how they plan, how they communicate, and how they require contractors like us to meet strict environmental and safety standards. Every piece of work is held to clear expectations for quality, compliance, and environmental performance. That is not just a statement. It is something I see in detail every day. This proposed upgrade at Station 150 would replace several older units with a single newer turbine that operates more efficiently and under tighter controls. According to the draft air permit released by NCDQ, this change is expected to reduce overall emissions at the facility. That conclusion is based on a detailed review of the equipment being removed, the expected performance of the new turbine, and the emissions limits and controls that will be in place once the upgrade is complete. NCDQ also conducted full air dispersion modeling, using both proposed emissions and local background and air quality conditions. That modeling is a key part of the permitting process. North Carolina does not issue permits unless it shows the project will meet air quality standards designed to protect public health and the environment. The draft permit confirms those limits are met. Beyond meeting strict air quality standards, this project plays a critical role in supporting our state's future. Energy needs across North Carolina continue to rise, driven by new industries, expanding communities, and increasing electricity demand. Natural gas is essential in keeping our energy both reliable and affordable. Based on what I've experienced in working with Williams and what the state's technical review shows, I support this permit moving forward. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Aiden Lawrence, followed by Thomas Getz.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak tonight. My name is Aiden Lawrence. I am a community organizer for the Hall River Assembly and Seven Directions of Service. I specialize in analyzing the cumulative impacts of fossil fuel projects and the collective health and safety of the Southeast United States. Compressor Station 150 needs updates to move more powerful gas through our community. I specialize in environmental justice, and tonight I'm representing the concerns of many folks that can't be here tonight. Pm2.5 pollution means fine particulate matter that is less than 2.5 milliliters in diameter. They pose a great health risk. After leaking into the air, they go into our soil and water. This type of pollution is already high in communities around compressor Station 150 with poor air quality. Station 150 is located near an air monitor that has reported unhealthy levels of ozone with increasing frequency over the years. Ambient concentration of Pm2.5 at compressor Station 150 has previously violated the federal standards. Folks have said that these health effects are insignificant, yet a majority of scientists determine that there is no safe exposure level of Pm2.5. These pollutants have severe respiratory and cardiovascular impacts, especially for disadvantaged and directly impacted vulnerable folks that are right next to the compressor station. Some of these vulnerable communities include Pine Hill Preparatory School, Carriage Health Preschool, Langtree Endoscopy, and Langtree Charter Academy, all of which are within less than one mile within the station. The Healthiest Communities Rankings from the U.S. Leasen World Report shows how nearly 3,000 U.S. counties and county-level equivalents perform across 92 metrics in 10 health-related categories. In 2024, while Iredelle County scored an overall 61, the lowest-scoring category was the environment with a score of 43. This low score is largely due to airborne cancer risk in Iredelle being about 1.4 times higher than the national average and air quality about 1.5 times worse than the U.S. average. Do we really think that we should be allowing any more strain on this community? Williams could avoid additional risk and burden by updating their compressor station with electric technology, something that is increasingly becoming industry standard. They have done this in other areas, so I'm not here. I propose a few different solutions that are based on a recent report by pinehill health experts across the nation. NCDQ should, one, complete a more thorough air quality assessment on the cumulative community health impacts; two, ask Williams for a detailed description of electrification alternatives to compressor Station 150; and require the best available control technology; three, ask her for an environmental impact statement, give the cumulative impacts of this project; and four, please deny the air permit until these conditions are met. I will use the rest of my time to say that while natural gas is more safe than coal, any fossil fuel is still dangerous for the climate crisis that we find ourselves in. So while I applaud taking some measures, I think we can be more stringent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Thomas Getz.
Thank you. My name is Thomas Getz. I live in Charlotte, North Carolina. I have retired from a career in environmental science. I opposed this project, and I will explain why. The project represents additional infrastructure investment in fossil fuels. When I was a college student over 50 years ago, I did a term paper on the effect of air pollution on the climate. Everything that is happening today is foreseen 50 years ago. The main difference is that as time goes by, it is much more stringent, much more severe, it's happening much, much faster than was foreseen 50 years ago. But the science that fossil fuels are changing the climate of the Earth is absolutely unequivocal. It's unequivocal. What's also unequivocal is that there's a lot of misinformation, disinformation, and propaganda surrounding the climate discussion, and anyone who does not recognize that fossil fuels are changing the climate of the Earth with dire implications for the future is because they are beholden to that propaganda and misinformation. If they were private discussion with Mayor, we'd have to do that. So I'm absolutely opposed to any additional infrastructure investment in fossil fuels. And I would say to the National Fuel Department of Environmental Quality, to the natural gas industry, any person who is in this responsibility for making decisions of this type should be opposed to any additional fossil fuel failure. To take that opposition is dismissing the future of our planet and the future of our children. I will make a rhetorical statement in my opinion that if these projects are approved, 75 years from now, your grandchildren will be deeply resentful of your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the names I have for those registered to speak. However, due to the number of people we have, if anyone wants to speak, they're allowed three minutes. Please state your name and who you're with.
How are you folks doing tonight? I'm Rachel Raider. I'm a field organizer for Climate Action NC. We fight for clean air, clean water, and basic human rights. We vouch for clean energy. I uphold what folks here have said about the need to transition and decarbonize, okay, our energy infrastructure. Okay? So the thing about natural gas is it does burn cleaner than coal, but it heats the planet 10 times faster. So when we talk about global warming, when we talk about heat waves in the United States, when you're sweating through everything you have on this summer and your electric bill is astronomical... We fight for clean air, clean water, and basic human rights. We vouch for clean energy. I uphold what folks here have said about the need to transition and decarbonize, okay, our energy infrastructure. Okay? So the thing about natural gas is it does burn cleaner than coal, but it heats the planet 10 times faster. So when we talk about global warming, when we talk about heat waves in the United States, when you're sweating through everything you have on this summer and your electric bill is astronomical, and then you think about the only way to cool my body down is to turn the AC up, and then that is fueled by fossil fuels, which is create a vicious cycle, won't it? Where the need for more and more energy will increase, right?